Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Home Meeting for June 6, 2023. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to again please to call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Ganzey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Fort?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have this evening on the committee is Community and Economic Development Committee Chairman Ganzey.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have two items. Number one, the community branding request proposal. So this is one of the short-term goals of the village. And we issued the RFP for the community branding last year. We received seven submissions in the term of the top three to bring before the Economic Development Commission. After two meetings with presentations by two finalists, the EDC recommended in favor of hiring A5 branding and digital. The quote for the entire branding campaign is $65,000 to $80,000. Staff will do this during this campaign over several fiscal years, beginning with the initial two phases of outreach and engagement campaign plan and campaign concept development with some photography at the cost of $20,000 to $25,000. Staff will budget accordingly next fiscal year and beyond to continue branding campaign if the village board finds A5 worth satisfactory. I believe we have someone from A5 here tonight who, if you can give us a rundown of what that first phase looks like, please.
Yes, John Harris is here from A5.
Sorry, Tony, did you want to say something as well?
Just that, as you mentioned, we had a lot of good submittals. They came in in the $60,000 to $100,000 range. Scott and I met and followed up with Mr. Harris twice between the EDC meeting in April and bringing it before you tonight to work with him to do what we could to fit it in to this year's fiscal year budget.
So I just have questions on what that first phase looks like and then what the next phase would bring.
The first phase, and thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity to work with staff to get to this point and to talk with you this evening. I'm John Harris from A5 Branding and Digital. And the campaign itself would be designed to help drive business, economic development and business retention. We also want to attract folks here to Bartlett and make sure that a story is told about the great quality of life here for businesses, for residents and those who visit the community. So from a multi-budget year perspective, what we've talked through and is before you for approval is, over the course of a couple of years, in the first year, we would do outreach and engagement. So we'd listen to the community. We'd obviously spend time here, which we already do, and come to events. But by talking with people through one-on-one interviews and focus groups and participation in community events, we're going to get a good sense of what's here and take stock of that, the assets that are here and the story that can be told. Then we'll work to develop the campaign concept so it's a branded campaign. And those concepts, we generally bring three or more concepts, you know, to y'all for review and consideration. A campaign concept is chosen, and then we would get that ready for a launch. And what we're talking about with the timing of the fiscal year is doing some of that outreach and engagement, really kicking this off our part in the fall. But we attend some summer events because we know how important that is to get out and see people and meet people in the community. We've talked about doing some photography this summer because of the weather and the trees and the greenery and all of that sort of stuff. But we'd really be doing the outreach and engagement mostly in the fall with the campaign concept development and the winter for a rollout in late spring of next year.
What's the last community that you've did something like this, that we could actually see the work product?
Yeah, great question. We just started year five in the city of Crystal Lake, and that's an economic development campaign. We're working, sorry, year four in Crystal Lake. We worked with the Village of Niles and Love Niles Campaign, and that's mostly resident attraction and retention and community building. We worked in the city of Woodstock for, I think, seven years. We have a number of, we do work all over the country, so from Ohio to Michigan to Florida and all points in between. So those campaigns are in the body of our proposal, and we'd be happy to go through any of those at any point.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
I have a question that I'd like to ask. Maybe staff can, we have done budgeted for this this year, have we? If we do this, we'll budget for it next year?
There's a budget. We have an advertising line item, and we anticipated budgeting $20,000 to $25,000 in the first year. So that is available in year one for this project.
I'm just having a little trouble understanding the concept because I know that our vacancy's down. Bartlett is a growing town. I mean, everything. Somebody really needs to justify to me.
What's our vacancy rate?
Yeah.
Could you provide that, our current vacancy rate?
Our vacancy rate is very low at this time.
Right. I don't know what the percentage is, but I know it's low.
I last checked it late January. I think it was about a 6% or so for commercial and lower than that for industrial. So, I mean, for that question, then the vacancy rates are very low at this point.
Looking at Bartlett, what would be anticipated and what do you envision happening after, or after the first phase, let's say? So you do the first phase. What do you think like our outcome would be? What tangible would we see?
Great question. Rollout of the campaign, there are two primary ways to measure results and impact. There are soft measurables, so it could be traffic to the website. It could be people spending more time on the website, social media, followers and engagement, positive comments on social media, a wide variety of sort of advertising and digital metrics that we could use to measure the success of the campaign. On the more hard side of things, in Woodstock as an example, there were, the measurables included EAV and sales tax revenue and vacancy rates and those types of things to make sure population growth as well. Now, for the record, I'm not suggesting that a campaign is the single reason for the success of a community when it comes to those factors. But what we do know from our work and others doing this work is that it enables you to craft and tell your own story and control your own narrative so that when you are going out to the market, even if vacancies are low on the commercial residential side, retail side too, that you're able to tell a story as market conditions change and as time goes on. So we would work with staff to make sure that we have an agreed-upon set of measurables. And we always work toward that because that impact is important. We recognize that this is taxpayer dollars and you have to be great stewards of those taxpayer dollars.
I have three questions for staff or for the company here. How do you measure the success? What metric do you use to measure the success of the overall rebranding or branding of the Village of Bartlett?
It's the soft metrics that we just talked about or the hard metrics. And those would be the metrics that we would go through and agree upon. But I, you know, I think one other way to do it is perception of a community. And we could benchmark that against other communities. So you could do a perception study at the front end and then measure it year over year. But there are a lot of hard measurables and soft metrics that we would use to measure effectiveness. And when we get to advertising, for example, simple metrics, reach and impressions. We're doing a campaign for the state of Illinois right now. It's around gambling issues. And the metrics include traffic to the website, increased traffic to the website, increased number of calls to 1-800-GAMBLER, the hotline to help people with gambling issues, and also increased traffic to providers who help people with gambling issues. And the campaign just rolled out in January, and we're already almost four times what the previous campaign under a previous agency had developed. So the people are actually getting help in that case. So we would just make sure that we're working on all of those things related to economic development, quality of life and measuring so that you feel good about the money you're investing.
Well, to take that one step further, and I'm sorry, you've been, as far as the gambling, you're seeing more hits to the websites, to the social media sites, you're seeing more phone calls. But how do you know that that's equating to people actually getting help?
Because it's a closed-loop system within the state and IDHS. So there are providers that we work with around the state who actually provide those services. So we actually can, the systems, we can actually track how many people not only hit the website, how many people called the hotline, but how many people got appointments and then received services. And that's something that happens, again, let's just take economic, come back to economic development. We can work, if we're advertising in trade journals or if we're on social media or if we're in Crane's Chicago Business, we can measure the number of hits to the website, the number of emails sent, the number of leads that you get. All of those things are measurable. Actually, there's a question for staff. I didn't see it in here. Is there a yearly cost associated with this?
We're working off of the quote that he originally submitted. It gave a range of $65,000 to $80,000.
Per year?
For a total, for the total of this campaign. It's something, of course, that could be continued even after that. But, so we would anticipate budgeting in future fiscal years to continue this.
Okay. And the data and artwork and everything that he gathers, would A5 own that information? Should we not continue it on or would it be the Village of Bartlett's?
It's my understanding it would be the Village of Bartlett's. We included that in the original RFP.
And I'll confirm that that's true. It's yours. We do it. We work for you. You pay for it. We give it to you. No questions asked.
There's actually a letter that was sent to Tony in January. It's in the packet. And it really does over, it does explain what, we're not just looking to attract new businesses. It clearly states that they want to market Bartlett as a regional dining and business destination. So we're going to enhance, drive business and attract business and retain business. We're going to energize and inform current residents, which the Bart letter does. But any additional resources we can have to inform the residents is always a positive. Position the village as a desirable place for relocation. Enhance the village's image as a customer service focused community. They brought in Dean Richards to their Fourth of July parade to drive more people to the parade. Anything that we can do to enhance the Fourth of July, Oktoberfest, Marian Bright, within our community and outside our community, I think is positive. So some of the stuff is outlined in here. It's not, we're not simply using this to try and fill vacancies. It's kind of a broader marketing plan.
As long as they don't add any people to our parade. We don't need any more people at our parade.
Four hours. So this question is for staff. Do we utilize social media right, I mean, we use all of these platforms right now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we already have a community survey that goes out?
There was a community survey done.
It was just completed?
Yeah.
Correct. So is this something that you all feel that you need? Does staff feel that they need assistance like this?
While this was one of the tenants of the strategic plan, I mean, needing it is kind of a difficult question to answer. It's in the eye of the beholder. But we do go through it. We go through this process. We'll do everything we can to make sure that it has value for you folks as well as our residents. And this was something that we had started on, you know, a couple of years ago. But in conversations with staff and coming off the heels of COVID, we kind of put it on ice because of that. Another reason we put it on ice is because of the amount that the folks in this room have scratched and clawed to get some of the things that would help along with our branding campaign, such as the grocery store and the brewery. We wanted those things to be a highlight of this community along with the car dealership and grasslands. So that's kind of part of the reason we slow rolled the process and brought it here, also to make sure that it was appropriately budgeted for, which was that 20 to 25 that we put in the RFP. But just like many of the other RFPs that are being sent out, they all kind of came back high. So we went back to Mr. Harris and kind of carved out a new way to make sure that that budget is in there for the first year. And then if our relationship, if the board chose to go forward with the branding campaign, we would then craft the second phase and budget for that appropriately should the board choose to proceed. Does that answer your question?
I also think the phasing element is important.
I'm sorry, that the what?
The phasing elements of this is important the year over here so that we can be flexible. The vacancy rates that Tony just talked about are fairly recent. And, you know, economic development, you guys get a retention and a recruitment report. So I think it's important that we start shifting some of our focus to that retention element. It's not just recruiting. We don't have a lot of places that we can put people. So that, I don't want to miss the other side of that coin in that we need to pay attention to our folks who are here newly or for a long time like birth. So those are the kind of thoughts that we have on it. It's something that came out of your strategic planning and went through the EDC process.
The other thing I'd like to add is if we can package this the way that we did the bike trail, when you had the bike trail consultant come in and provided a 25-year plan and you could do this with this amount of money, you could do this with a little bit more money, and with a lot of money, you could do this. So maybe we take the marketing plan and break it into a five, 10-year plan and what's affordable now, what for a little bit more money could we do and what for a lot more money could we do?
Yeah.
Very similar to what we did with the bike. So at least we have a plan going forward instead of just kind of shooting from the hip.
At what point could A5 take a look at all the tools and resources the village has, make sure we're maximizing and using, like, I know we've got a new, you know, marketing platform. When would you take a look or integrate your branding and everything into there and make sure we're maximizing what we have?
That's a great question. I think in this first phase, in this first year, because we would want to not only listen to folks and capture and craft that story and get that campaign concept down, but clearly, to your point, we want to know what assets you have, what's working, what could be better. So what y'all would like to see working better and what staff would and what the community would like to see that's better. And really be able to help you maximize the value of what you're already doing. And we do that, right? So if you're, if you take social media, you know, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, TikTok, et cetera, those are things that, because we have a team of folks, we're taking a look at the latest trends, what's happening in other places and come back and can say, here's what's working well and here are some ways that we could improve it and make it more effective.
Yeah, I think you mentioned something, focus groups and what residents actually want. I think that's kind of key. And that's one thing that I think I would look forward to out of this and how that could mesh with our businesses and improve that. So.
Along those lines, just to see more people participate in the surveys, you know, if we only have 1,000 people participating in the survey, I don't believe that that's a very good representation of a community of 40,000-plus people. So if there's things that we could bring to the table to get more people to fill those surveys out or participate, or maybe we find that our social media is good average, but if there's things we could do to tweak it to make it better, I think it's value added.
So how would you steer more people to complete surveys?
Utilize every tool in the tool belt. So we just branded the Village of Northbrook, which I want to be clear is it was a different project. That was a village brand. So if you take a look at, you know, the logo up there and then everything that's on the flag and the fleet markings and, you know, all of your trucks, et cetera. But in doing that in Northbrook, we had a multi-pronged approach. So we did an email survey. And what we did there was we partnered, we not only did it through the village, we partnered with the Northbrook Chamber of Commerce. We also enlisted community partners, the library, the park district, the YMCA, to distribute the survey when people walked in to their facility. We went out to several public events, the farmer's market, Craft Beer Fest, et cetera. And we ran it through other partners, the school district, oh, faith-based communities too. Because in Northbrook, they wanted to make sure, and this is one of the things that candidly we're good at, is meeting people where they are. So at community events. But there's a fairly large Korean population in Northbrook. And so we enlisted the help of somebody who's prominent in the Korean community. And we actually met over dinner with a number of Korean residents who gave us their feedback. And some of it was in English and some of it was not in English. So it's figuring out who we want to talk to here in Bartlett. I would add the businesses to that. But we take a look at all of those different audiences and then figure out where the partnerships already exist. Golf course is an example with all of the people that play rounds is one. Your Fourth of July event is another. And then we make sure that we're getting the tools and the materials out there and we're getting the information back. And then synthesizing that and telling y'all what we've heard in those surveys and what our recommendations would be going forward.
So in the scope of services, Phase One is the first year. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then Phase Two would not be in the first year? Or would it, do you first?
Sorry, Phase Two?
Yes. Going in, do you normally go into Phase Two in the first year or does it normally take that whole first year to get through Phase One?
In most of the communities in which we operate, that $65,000 to $80,000 budget would be in year one. Excuse me. The way it was structured here was, hey, we've got 20 to 25 to be able to work with. And again, if we do our job right, then we'd have a year two and hopefully a year three. So that total budget would be spread out over three years. So that's how we came to this proposal in front of you is to do this Phase One in this fiscal year. And then the rollout would really be in the next fiscal year.
So I've noticed in several places you talk about, or you listed here, it's in Phase Three, project area, study area. So what determines what's a project area or a study area?
I'm not.
Some page, it's in your scope of services, Phase Three, for the redevelopment plan?
Tony, do you know where that is or Scott?
I'm looking for that right now.
Trustee Swansky, I would direct your attention to page three of Tony's staff memo. The year one summary is on the last page. I think, yeah, that's on the last page. Where it shows the 20 to 25 for year one outreach and engagement, campaign concept and photography.
I see that. In the project authorization, right?
Yeah. Because in the original RFP, we didn't, this was broken down in this format based upon our conversations with him to make sure that it fit properly in the budget. So they adjusted their typical order of how they do things to make sure that they came under that $25,000 mark.
I personally think one of the key components of this is that we're somewhat of a divided community based off Route 59 and in certain areas geographically. And this, to me, reaches out to the west and to the south side of Bartlett where some of our residents on those sides of towns really have no idea what's happening in downtown Bartlett. But to that point, some people in downtown Bartlett or on the east side have no idea what's developing and happening on the south end of town, which is growing. I mean, we're seeing development up there. So I think it does reach out to the 44,000 residents rather than just the one mile square here where people are driving by and seeing it. So that's one plus that I see from it.
I think it's more than a logo and a look. We're having a consultant come in and take a look at everything from leveraging our systems to what data we have available or what we could be looking at to make future decisions.
Yeah, I'm okay with this. I mean, we budgeted for it. We haven't done a campaign like this in, I mean, 20 years.
Yes, 16, 17 years.
15. So I think we're overdue. And if we're not happy with the product after the first year, we can cancel.
That would be my question, Trustee Hopkins. Is there some kind of metrics we would gauge the first year on to say, hey, this is a success, we're all on board, let's keep this train moving? Is it under the number of new Facebook people that are on board? Is it the number of new email addresses we get? Is it the multiple of all of the above?
I think from Mr. Harris's answer earlier, I think it is all of that above. And I think what we could do is we can work with him to right-size that and identify which metrics we're going to then judge how that first year went.
Yeah. And one of the things that I would just chime in on, it's no mystery that the two things that people look at in a community that are most important is safety in schools. So I would just suggest that we try to do whatever we can PR-wise to highlight Bartlett High School, our elementary schools, or the way that those things are operating within the, I mean, those are the two main reasons why people move to any community. Is it safe? Do they have great schools? So if you're just looking on the residential side, that's one thing. I don't think on the industrial side, we need any branding right now. We're pretty much full. But from a residential and retail idea, I totally am on board with the fact that it not only engages people that don't usually get engaged, but it also promotes businesses that are already here. I think that's the most benefit that you get from something like this. That it highlights things that are already here are coming very soon. And that is a feather in our cap for those businesses saying, hey, you're on my side.
And it'd be nice for our businesses to know that we are doing marketing to support them and to bring more people from outside of Bartlett to come to our restaurants, come to our stores. So I'm all for that. The other thing is maybe a progress report quarterly or, you know, every six months just to say, okay, this was approved. We had the meeting today. Where are we at four months from now? Where are we at eight months from now? So that, so we're aware of what's going on.
Is that possible?
Yes.
Is it going?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that could just be a one-page executive summary coming in, show us some pictures of, show us some videos. So when we go back to people, we can tell, I just want to be able to tell the people of the town, this is what we're doing. We're spending your money this way, but this is what you're getting in return. That's important to me.
Yeah, absolutely. And you hit the nail on the head. This is going to create a story and a narrative and stories that create excitement for both sides, all sides of the community and for the businesses. So yes, attraction, yes, retention. But it will create a sense of positive feeling and community building inside and outside Bartlett.
And I think one of those key factors in that story that you're talking about is how historical our town is.
Yeah.
People just.
I would encourage you to talk to Pam, our historian at the museum. She's got more history of this town. She's a great resource and she can't be overlooked.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Thank you. Yep, we'll move it on to the board for a final vote. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good to see you.
All right. Item number two, we have the Business Economic Development Grant Revision. So with five years having passed since the BETA program's inception, staff is proposing the following improvements to help ensure that funds are allocated and reinvested to maximize that, kind of paraphrase this. Add a consent form for the application that the village may conduct the background checks, credit inquiries or review financial records to assess the qualifications and credibility of the applicant. Impose a callback provision if the BETA recipient relocates business outside the village, ceases operations, fails to comply in the first three years after receiving the grant, that the village can recoup a portion of the funds. Outdoor Dining Outdoor dining as an eligible expense would only include permanent improvements, would exclude, uh, include only permanent improvements, including patios, railings, and permanent outdoor seating fixtures. Expensive for tables, chairs, or others, or other items that can be easily moved would not be eligible. Stronger language requiring a project to be completed within twelve months, and that an extension request must be made in writing by the applicant and presented for approval to the grant administrator, EDC, or village board if necessary. A requirement that the applicant have a certificate of occupancy and a valid business license prior to the grant payment being made. Uh, requirements that the applicant be current on all payments due to the village. Language that acknowledges that the final cost come in less than what is estimated, then the grant amount will be reduced accordingly. Requirements to provide a copy of the lease upon request to ensure that the village does not make a grant to a business with an expiring lease. The EDC reviewed these revisions at its May eighth meeting, at which time it recommended in favor of them with the added language that background checks be completed for all applicants. Staff is seeking village board input on the parameters of the proposed clawback provision, whether or not to require a background check on all applicants, or if there should be a specific dollar amount to trigger one.
I agree with the EDC that background checks should be required for all applicants.
Agreed.
And then also, number eight, it's kind of confusing, requirements to provide a copy of lease upon request. I think it should say shall require a lease, not if we request it.
Yeah, if you want to give it to us, yeah, we definitely want to make sure that they're in the lease.
Yeah, I think that should just be a given.
Yeah, and proof that they aren't behind on their lease.
Yeah, good point.
Are all businesses in Bartlett required to have a business license?
Um, it's my understanding that some of the state licensed, uh, businesses aren't required to obtain them from the village.
So, are we required, somebody that wants to request a BETA to actually get a business license? Is that how you're wording this?
Really just ensuring that they have a valid business license, that they haven't either allowed it to lapse or that we don't do a disbursement prior to them obtaining their license.
From Illinois and/or the state.
Correct.
From the Illinois and/or the village.
Right.
I think the clawback, um, is interesting because it actually puts a little bit more pressure on people that are taking the funds. Um, do you guys have some general recommendations as to how that would look?
Yes, um-
Like expiring after a year or something, or?
Yeah, um, the village attorney, uh, has drafted-
You can certainly talk about that.
Yeah.
So, um, we put a template, uh, agreement together that's in your packet there. We have that set up so that it's a three-year term, kind of that the-
It would basically be one fourteen.
Yeah. Set up, it's kind of a forgivable loan.
I do answer.
That it would, uh, have thirty-three percent, you know, expire in that first year, and then so on, so on, for three years, so that they stay open for two years and then they go out of business. We're only really trying to clawback thirty-three percent of the original loan.
Let me ask you this, if somebody-
Get closer to your mic.
Oh, if somebody has a BETA grant, let's say hypothetically, pick a number, five grand, and, uh, the clawback effect is, and they go out of business, okay, after a year, eighteen months, going to spend money to chase that?
Obviously, that's something that we'd have to consider on a case-by-case basis. If we really wanted to have more of a clawback with a lot more teeth, you could set this up that it becomes a lien on the property, but that makes it more complicated because you're bringing in a landlord then as a part of every agreement as well.
But I mean, if they're out of business, you know, then we're going to spend money if we were to give them five grand.
I think it's more geared toward people that are moving their business out.
Yeah, yeah, well, we talked a little bit about that too, you know, if they move out and if they have, uh, fixtures that are in the store, you know, you want to take it?
Uh, my, my worry with the, the clawback is are we going to deter some of the mom and pop shops from applying, or a restaurant that is very iffy and three years to be a while? I said we had a good success story with when Indian Express moved in and they fixed it up so it could be a restaurant. They left, and another restaurant was able to move in right away. So, the money was well spent from our perspective of keeping a business in there, whether it's the same one or different, but I think it would be, I would hate to see us go, try to get money back when they left everything there, if that-
So, I think what, what you have to do is put some type of clause in there, in my opinion, that it has to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, you know? If somebody actually walks away and they're done, you know, I don't want to chase them. But if we have fixtures and whatnot in the, uh, in the establishment that are part, parcel of BETA grant and someone coming in after that can use them, then maybe we should reevaluate how much would be taken into account with, in the, uh, in the clawback.
How complicated is it to put mechanic's liens on fixtures that are tangible?
I don't think you can.
We, we as the village really wouldn't have an ability to do that in this circumstance as a grant. Our ability, i- i- for a larger lien, uh, for larger projects, having it be a lien on real, the actual-
The actual property, yeah.
That's probably the most effective tool.
Yeah.
But certainly, i- in, and to, uh, the point there about whether or not we need to enforce this, every time, we're going to have the choice to go after it or not. It's, there's nothing in the agreement-
Better to have the verbiage than not to have the verbiage.
Yeah, we would never obligate us to actually file lawsuit or pursue it to that point. It's always something we'd have that discretion.
I mean, what was the grant for the Bartlett tap?
Fifty, I think.
Yeah.
It was gone in-
It was, uh, thirty-five.
That was gone in, they were gone in less than a year, right?
Yeah.
And then the building was completely re, I mean, we didn't, that's not being used for a restaurant right now.
Well, that's a good point. We couldn't get that thirty-five grand back, he was gone.
But he owned the building, didn't he?
No, no, it was bank-owned.
He leased it?
Yeah, he leased it. He leased the, uh, first level and the bank owned the, uh-
That was, that's a unique situation because that back bar is worth thirty-five grand. I mean, you could easily put the lien on something like that.
I, I want to tell you what, what you did with this, with the provisions on the BETA, I think are outstanding. I really do, because of situations that we've been involved in, that, that I've seen. And, uh, I think if we could just tweak just a little bit, the, uh, I like, I like the concept of, uh, the village may conduct a background check. If somebody came in for a sign, I don't know, I, I know how everyone feels about background checks, but I'm thinking in my mind, I don't know how much it would cost, how many staff hours we'd have to have into a background check, right? And if he's looking for a twenty-five hundred dollar sign, you know, maybe we could waive the background check. But that's something that, uh, we could discuss, and, uh-
Is there a background check for a business license?
No, no, there wouldn't be.
Yeah, it depends on the license, depends on which license you're getting.
But I think it's important to put additional provisions when you're actually providing them with-
Funds.
The funds that we've put aside from the gambling, you know? I think it's important to put additional provisions on that stuff.
We're not exactly-
It doesn't take that long to do a background check.
Well, the police department does them, um, but we are not exactly flooded with BETA's. I mean, if we want to do a background check on our three hundred and twenty-some, you know, business licenses, that would be a burden. But I think one or two BETA's, you know, I don't think it's-
And the BETA program has kind of evolved a little bit into a restaurant grant because dining is what's hot right now. All of our liquor licenses require a background check as well. So, there's some seamless overlap there that wouldn't be cumber, wouldn't be as cumbersome.
So, are we not, we're just reimbursing them for something that they've already purchased.
What?
We're reimbursing them for what they've already purchased.
Of course, and then, yeah.
Unfortunately, if somebody goes out of business and we just reimburse them for a sign, there's really nothing we can do about it. The goal is to assist them so that they are a successful business.
Correct.
It's a kind of a crapshoot after that. So, I'm happy that we have legal verbiage. If we need to use it, it's there. But let's face it, restaurants have, what, a three to five percent survival? You know, it's, it's good luck. So, we're there to help them. That's the whole concept behind the BETA grant. Sure, we need to protect ourselves on the back end of it, but it is what it is.
Why was it three years?
That's just a, a term, a, a standard, uh, kind of amortization schedule that came up. We can change that however the village would like, totally up to the board.
Were you thinking reducing it?
Yeah.
I know there's been some-
I would feel comfortable with two years.
I feel like two is enough.
The residents have talked behind the scenes on, on, right now, the, right now, the BETA grant eligibility is based on a PIN number, and we seem to have sometimes the same people, the same business owners.
We've had that a few times, you know, with Bartlett Plaza and, and over at Banbury Fair.
Right, right.
So, is that something that it-
Right.
I think those are unusual to handle because of so particular areas, things that are multiple. So, the idea of, I'm thinking, and, uh, that is more for the common, and the majority of the BETA grants is for that, for the uses.
Right, individual businesses.
I think that's great. That's why, you know, it comes before the village board for a vote. So, I mean, if we didn't see value in the business owners applying for multiple BETA's, we could turn them down, or you could vote no, if you did not see value in that. I think the multiple BETA's from the individuals that did do them, they provide great value to our community. So, I, I don't mind doing that because our residents look at the streets of Bartlett. I mean, I think it just speaks for itself, so.
I think, um, I, I think Trustee Gansey's point about the fact that some businesses come in because we were able to help them, I'd never even really thought about that before. So, I think that's a good, valid point. But, um, two years, I think, with the clawback, at least it's in there, you don't have to enforce it if you don't want to. So, like, uh, fifty percent first year, or thirty-three percent in sixty-seven, then it goes away after two years.
Well, and I think we should also look at it, not to just attract businesses, but to retain businesses. So, you look what we did with Postamia with the windows and what we've done with Bruce over here. So, I, I think, I think it covers a lot of bases.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's a good use of the money and, and where the money comes from.
It's an excellent program. I'm so happy with it.
So, I'm glad we're protected on the back end. Have we, so I don't know the percentage. It, it's done more good than bad, correct? Have we been burned enough times that it's, or have we won? Has it been a positive?
It's done, it's done far more good than bad. I mean, it's, it's leveraged, um, millions of dollars of private investment. Um, a lot of the preliminary meetings that Scott and/or I have with people, um, they've heard about it and they factor it into their business plan and, uh, whether or not to locate here or expand. So, uh, I'm, I'm going to say yes, it's, it's, uh, been good.
Back end legally, which is good.
Did, uh, still, the, the new name of the still, the boss's signature?
Yes.
Did they end it up with a BETA grant, didn't they?
They have, have not. Um, thanks for bringing that up because we have three BETA grants currently in the works where they've applied prior to any of these changes being made, so you know.
But I know this-
Um, and that's one of them. The boss's signature is working on one right now.
Okay.
Um, refresh my memory on the parameters. Um, is a business, if it's the actual owner, are they allowed to, like, resurface the front of their, um, parking lot?
We have not put that in. Um, it's mostly for, the easiest way to think about it is for a, a interior build-out.
Or signage, or whatever, yeah.
Facades, sign, windows, uh, landscaping, thank you.
What are some things we have to say no to?
Um, well, primarily, they're non-sales tax-producing businesses, quite, they ask on a fairly regular basis. And then some others I would characterize as just, uh, kind of typical maintenance, uh, repainting the inside or replacing some seating or something like that.
Well, it's not, it's not, um, it's not a refurbishing the inside of my diner grant. It is, I'm expanding, I need more tabletops, I'm doing something that's going to generate more tax dollars back, going to, you know, enhance what I have here. It, it's not, we need new carpeting. That's not what that's for.
But I would argue that some of the things that business owners probably don't have the capital for that would increase their business substantially are the things that we might, we wanted to consider expanding the program on. Because we earmarked it for this, it's an expanding number of dollars that we have that we can be moving out the door to these businesses. And if somebody's just on the edge of, of making it and not making it, and there's, the establishment's been around for a while, but they need a refreshing look, I, I don't know why we wouldn't support that type of a, an idea.
And maybe it's just, maybe, maybe it's just a different percentage or a different portion, but it's something. You know, the, hey, the village helped us out.
Um, I don't, you know, I think we get a few of those requests, but not too many. Um, I would also say that we may want to look to earmark some of the gaming revenue to help us with the sidewalk program that we'd like to on our refurbishing our sidewalks. So, I don't, I, you know, it may not be an ever extend, expanding pool.
That'll be the cannabis pool.
Cannabis pool.
Cannabis pool.
We're not big enough.
For that stuff.
Um, Scott and Tony, just as an aside, went to, I don't know what it was really called, but the cannabis convention, um, and it turns out that we don't have enough space for these guys. So, that was kind of an interesting learning experience. Um, yeah, they need, and I don't think we actually want to be the, one of the newer towns that have a lounge.
No.
That seems what, to be what most people are looking for. Um-
We were asked about that a few times.
Okay, Chairman, take it over.
All right, so with those changes to the two years?
Yeah.
Uh, we'll forward this, uh, on to the upcoming village board meeting for a final vote.
Thank you, Chairman Gansey. Final item this evening on the committee, the whole licensing committee, uh, License Ordinance Committee, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item, and that's the chicken and bee license update. Um, I think with this, I just want to make this quick. I think I brought it up. Um, I think we should in, increase the chicken licenses up to fifty, probably, and-
How many we got now?
Sixteen.
Those people could be really making a lot of money right now.
(laughing)
Selling eggs.
Yeah.
And you want it to be fifty, five-zero?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think we're going to hit it in the next one or two years, but then we don't have to really talk about it for-
For a while.
For a while.
I may have read this incorrectly. It said that the total number of chicken license were twenty-five per year. I thought that-
That we authorized-
That's what I thought was the max.
That's the max right now. I'd like to raise it to fifty.
Yeah.
And then also for larger lots, I think we should, um, allow homeowners to increase the amount of chickens that they have, um, based on lot size. So, if you have the minimum lot size, I think that is a proper amount of chickens. But if you have a larger lot, you should have more, and I think that's in line with what other communities do. Um, so I think we should just look at that and send it to the village board for a vote then.
I would be curious to know how many, what-
It's a zoning text amendment, so it requires a public hearing.
Man.
I, I would, I would, I would ask how many complaints, how many complaints have we had about the noise of chickens?
I have gotten no complaints about chickens. I've gotten a complaint about someone who had a rooster that did not have a chicken license, and they had to get rid of the rooster.
So, my neighbor was only complaining to me, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I have not gotten any complaints.
He was only complaining to me, then.
Let me ask you this. In, uh, in lieu of raising it, you know, to fifty, like you were talking about, which is fine, uh, we, we have twenty-five that are currently available, and we're only using sixteen, you know? It looks like we have quite a bit of room there to expand.
I think Adam's just saying so we don't have to talk about it.
So, we don't have to talk about this in-
More people want it.
Two to three, I mean, you can, we can bring it up again.
Do you know how many kids Adam has? He's looking to get some chickens.
Uh-oh.
Oh.
Well, you might have more, more people apply if you incorporated yours for larger lots.
Yeah.
Allowing them to have more chickens that might-
Yeah.
Because I know you really want to use that barn out there for, you know?
I would just, I do not want chickens in my barn.
Yeah.
Why did the chicken cross the road?
And the board is going to Kentucky Fried Chicken, right?
(laughing) So, yeah, I'll let staff, you know, kind of look over what other communities do as far as increasing the amount of chickens per lot size if it's larger. And, you know, I, I don't think we need to bring it back before us, but I think, I mean, I trust your guys' judgment on that, so.
We'll keep monitoring it. We are planning on reworking our entire zoning ordinance, so this is one of the changes that I'll have noted that we'd like to incorporate.
All right, that's perfect.
Do you have any comments, questions about chickens?
Nope.
Oh, bees, so.
Are you talking about bees?
Oh, bees.
I mean, there's only one, uh, license currently, so I don't think we need to up that to fifty, but-
Is that only camera or is the only one that's licensed?
No, it is not.
Huh, oh, really?
Bartlett Hills, we have bees.
We lost our swarm.
Oh, wait, did we?
It's a swarming incident, I think, in some, or-
Like, I, I mean, is it worth talking about? Does other communities allow more hives per lot? Or is that typical?
We're pretty standard with what people allow on a residential lot. There are other communities that have created their own, um, apiaries.
Yeah, Hannover Park is a good area.
Where they have community apiaries and you-
Hannover Park.
Hives there, and you're in charge of maintaining your hive. That's something that's starting to get more popularity.
Couldn't we just have them file a variance if somebody wanted to do something and leave it at that?
Yeah, could they?
But there's a lot of buzz around that.
That is not currently an allowable variance per our-